Call a meeting to order. Please rise. I would ask that we have a moment of silence for all those schoolchildren in that massacre in Florida, the teacher or coach, and also for those law enforcement officers that were killed in the past couple of weeks, and pray that our troops come home safe. Thank you. Let's...
(Inaudible)
Here. 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 We have some recognitions?
Yes, first is recognizing Black History Month in Middlesex County. Next is recognizing the honor used at the Middlesex County Pan African Flag Raising on Saturday, February 17, 2018. And last is recognizing Sheriff Mildred Scott, as he received 2018 Pratt, Otero, Alfonso, Shawn, and R. Award.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some.
Second. Motion by Field Valente, second by Deputy Director Tamaro. Roll call.
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Penny? Fielder Capel? Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Valenti?
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios?
Yes.
Roll call.
Good evening, everybody. Ms. Collier here? She's not here. Okay, move on. How about the... Do I see any Girl Scouts out there? Can I have the Girl Scouts come over?
Come on, girls.
And of course their leader, please. Okay. I'll read the resolution first, and then I'll have a couple of comments. Whereas Black History Month began as a way for remembering important people and events in the history of the American past forever, and whereas Black History Month was first proposed by Black educators and Black United States students at Kent State University in February 1969, whereas six years later, Black History Month was celebrated all across the country in educational institutions, centers of Black culture, and community centers, both great and small. President Gerald Ford recognized Black History Month during the celebration of the United States' bicentennial, and urged Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas Black History Month recognizes the contributions African Americans have made and continue to make that are an integral part of our society and history, whereas the Girl Scouts of Central and Southern New Jersey, specifically here in Brunswick, thrive in five key ways: they develop a strong sense of self, display positive values, see challenges, and learn from setbacks; form and maintain healthy relationships; and learn to identify and solve problems within their community. Now therefore, I Ronald Rios. That Director of the Board of Chosen Freeholders of Middlesex County do hereby proclaim February 2018 as Black History Month in Middlesex County, and recognize the Girl Scouts of Central and Southern New Jersey, and in particular, New Brunswick. Can we get around with applause? Ms. George, if you want to come up? I had the opportunity to have her. I had the opportunity... Now, I had the opportunity to meet these young ladies on Thanksgiving. Whereas many of us spend time with our families and friends, these young ladies sacrificed the majority of their Thanksgiving Day to make sure that they provided meals to the homeless here in New Brunswick. We often hear about millennials and younger generations, I'm not sure which generation this qualifies for, but I think they're out of the realm of millennials. We often hear about their selfishness and not their selflessness, and I think it was very important to recognize that we do have very good young people in all communities of all different backgrounds, and too often we don't see a lot of young ladies, especially of color, being up front and being honored for their selflessness in the community. So ladies, that's why I wanted to bring you here to this meeting. I know it was a hard day of serving meals and making sure it got out to the community, but on behalf of a grateful county, I want to say thank you very much, and I want to allow your leader, of course, to come up and say a few words.
Okay, I didn't know that I was gonna have to say anything, of course, but I do want to mention that I'm so proud of working with these young ladies, and most of them have been here since daisies, which is like five years old, and they've remained moving up with me and some other leaders in New Brunswick. So now we have two of them that are graduating this year, so they've been in Girl Scouts since then. We've had the opportunity to go and march in the Show Your Shoes Parade for the Miss America Pageant for the last two years, and it was a wonderful experience, and I'm proud of them because I could not walk that parade, but they were able to walk from the beginning to the end. We have sang Christmas carols for senior citizens on Livingston Avenue and the place on Somerset Street, which is the name of Providence Square. They seem to have always enjoyed the girls to come out. So we have done Black History Month programs, and we are grateful to be acknowledged on this day, and thank you for having us.
Director?
Yes?
While they're taking your pictures, can I just say I'm just slightly disappointed because I don't think any of you brought Girl Scout cookies to try to sell to us.
Yes. (Inaudible)
Show up, show up, run to the door for me. All the freeholders?
I like this movie, it's smooth.
Short.
Thank you.
Roll. Did one of you call your board? Okay. Ms. Collier? You want to come out? That's you, that's Collier. Yeah? There's just right here. Okay. The resolution's here. Okay. We'll skip all the "whereas's" about Black History Month and go straight to this very important member of our community.
(Inaudible).
Like that? Whereas Juanita Collier of the Borough of Highland Park is the longest living African American resident of the borough, and I believe of our entire county. She is living back in her community as a lifelong member of Ebenezer Baptist Church in New Brunswick, where she served as choir director for 13 years, and now serves as church historian among other responsibilities. Now therefore, I Ronald Rios, Director of the Board of Chosen Freeholders of Middlesex County, do hereby proclaim February 2018 as Black History Month, and specially recognizing Juanita Collier for her achievements and contributions to Middlesex County.
All I can say is thank you. Thank you, God, for letting me be around this block for 88 years. I'm still going, I'm still doing, not as much, but still doing, and I'm very, very happy and feel very honored to be honored by my borough. I think everybody in the borough knows exactly who I am because I'm out on the street going to the stores, et cetera. And I live 150 feet from where I was born. I was born on South 7th Avenue. My father bought the property all around on 7th and 8th because he wanted to keep the family together, so my brother built his house on one side of his house. I'm in the backyard, which is facing 8th. My sister was next door, so we're all together here, and I'm very, very happy and very, very thankful that I do see this whole world. Thank you very, very much. Oh, there's somebody right there.
We'll come out over here a little bit more soon. Get off, get off. You can move up if you want to take a picture.
Oh, that's your granddaughter?
This is your granddaughter?
That's my baby granddaughter.
(Inaudible) have a baby, oh, Lord.
This one's on this side is my son, my baby, and back by the door is the big boy, my brother. Two sons. Sweet, what a girl.
Don't leave them ball people anymore.
(Inaudible).
Oh, okay. There.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this time I'll open up the public portion on Resolution Number 18-186.
Anybody have any comments? Is there a motion to close the public portion?
Some.
Motion called by Deputy Director Tamaro, second by Freeholder Valente. All in favor? Called, motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Motion. Second. Roll call.
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Penny?
Yes.
Fielder Capel?
Yes.
Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Valenti?
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios?
Yes. Okay. Tonight we're going to introduce the 2018 Middlesex County Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. I want to commend this Freeholder Board, Special Finance Chair, Freeholder Leslie Capel, our Administrator John Palamina, and our CFO Joe Peretti, and all our entire county workforce for their dedication to serving our residents and helping us to maintain or decrease our spending and increase our revenue to help us provide quality services at the lowest possible cost. I thank the Freeholders for working with our department heads to produce the budget proposal we've put forward tonight. Middlesex County has attained for 17th year the coveted AAA bond rating. This excellent rating enables us to spend less taxpayer money when completing critical infrastructure projects. This is crucial as we are budgeting $58 million to our capital improvement master plan to complete vital road, bridge, facility, educational, parks, and other infrastructure projects. This is not, this not only ensures the safety of our residents, but improves their well-being and our efficiency and effectiveness. The rating agency has recognized the fiscal austerity and financial acumen we exercise. They have remarked favorably on our ability to reduce our overall debt by $226 million since 2013. Also, we have eliminated the use of one-time revenue sources in favor of building sustainable reoccurring revenue sources such as our numerous shared service agreements. These agreements comprise 24% of the special items of revenue, or over $10.1 million. We will continue our work in reducing our costs and generating new revenue to lessen the taxpayer, to lessen the tax burden on our residents. Over the next few weeks, as we work toward the adoption of the budget, we will continue to assess each program and expense and seek out ways to increase revenue to ensure we are meeting the needs of all our residents. With that, I would like to ask Freeholder Capel to introduce the budget proposal.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I introduce to you the 2018 Middlesex County Budget Proposal. This $469.9 million proposal follows Middlesex County's tradition of maintaining or lowering the cost of operations without impacting the quality of the services offered. What is noticeable, notable about this year's budget proposal is that the county's overall debt is $32 million, less than it was in 2017, with a total savings of $226 million in overall debt since 2013. The proposal also includes more than $10 million in sustainable reoccurring revenue sources, and once again does not include any one-time revenue devices to increase spending or begin gaps. For a seventh straight year, the budget proposal does not rely on surplus funds to fill budget gaps. No other county in the state of New Jersey can say that. These are a few of the reasons we maintain our excellent bond rating and can provide the quality services our residents need at the lowest possible costs. A modest $2,487,000 increase in salaries and wages is due to 2% negotiated wage increases. Increases in mandated expenses, expenditures that are outside of county's control, total $5,758,974. We have maintained or decreased spending in every line item we control. And despite these belt tightening measures, we will continue to invest in our critical infrastructure because as public servants, we must ensure the safety of our residents and improve their quality of life by offering safer roads and bridges and top-notch educational and recreational facilities. I would like to thank my fellow Freeholders, the county administrator, the Finance Department under the direction of Joe Peretti, and all of our employees for their hard work in establishing this proposal. Now, I would like to recognize our CFO and Treasurer, Joe Peretti, to walk us through the budget.
Thank you, Freeholder. Good evening, Freeholders, members of the public. Tonight I'm here to introduce the budget for 2018. The 2018 budget is comprised of $469,920,000, with a tax levy of $389,875,249. I'll give some highlights on the overall budget in a little detail on the different sections. This budget represents less than 1% increase in the average tax rate, and it's also under the 2% stay mandated cap. With this budget, we continue a 10-year-old trend of budget minimal increases. As the Freeholder mentioned, this will be the straight, seventh straight year of not using surplus fund balances to balance our budget. We're the only county in the state that has a practice of not relying on surplus to balance its budget. We don't consider doing so to be a good financial practice. Our salaries are going up by $2.4, approximately $2.5 million, which is in line with 2% negotiated annual wage increases. On the operating side, we will continue to invest in technology, infrastructure, and equipment upgrade. These investments are critical in order to provide a proper level of services to our residents. However, 70% or $5.8 million of the $8.5 million increase in operating expenses comprise of non-discretionary items, which are not controlled by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, and they are health insurance increased by 2.4 million, or 4% from last year, well below the private sector in the state of New Jersey, plan increases. We can't attribute some of this low rate of increase to the county wellness program, which is now in its 5th year. Utilities increased by $1.6 million, primarily due to projected increases in energy rates and gasoline prices, and also due to the recent coal spills. Pension costs up by $1.2 million. These rates are set by the state New Jersey pension system. And the last item there is a loan correction center that's related to new medical and food contracts and investment and new jail management system. Now, on the right side are the discretionary increases which we have in our budget. The increase in highway and bridges, the first item there, and central vehicle, the third item there, is the county's continued effort to decrease dependency on one-time revenue fixes. Approximately five years ago, the county began to slowly reduce revenue subsidies in certain eligible budgets. We have successfully eliminated all the subsidies, and these increases of $1.588 million represents a very least of the effective budgets. An increase of $300,000 is required to fund two newly created offices. The Office of Public and Government Affairs was created in order, in order to actively, actively work closely with the state and federal agencies and legislatures in order to seek out policies and funding sources that could benefit the people and business of Middlesex County. In 2018, the Board also created the Office of Professional Development in order to better provide continuing career development opportunities to our employees. This investment will result in a more efficient and productive workforce. The other two items on the list are requiring in order to properly fund activities for two of our times agencies, the Board of Social Services and the Votex School System. All other increases not listed on the sheet, such as statutory, contractual, and cost of living increases, are being offset by budget reduction within our budget. This demonstrates our commitment in keeping costs to a very minimum. The commitment can be also found by looking at a five-year trend that averages just above 1% annual increases in discretionary operating expenses. Now let's move to revenues. Operating revenues increased by $3 million. Top in the list is our Sheriff's Office, followed by the County Clerk, revenues which have increased by $844,000. This is due to an increase in realty transactions, which is a specific indicator of the sound local economy. The next regular increase is interest and investments. This interest increase of over half a million dollars is a result of the county's increased cash position in 2018. On the special item of revenue, as the Freeholders have mentioned, are slightly down by 1.5 million. Here is where we define reoccurring sustainable shared service agreements, such as Health Agent Municipally, Regional Medical Examiner, and Youth Service Agreements with other counties. In 2018, all the shared services bring in over $10 million in revenue. The next item of our budget is our capital budget. Freeholders, in your packet, you'll see you have the summary of the post-capital budget for 2018. This year, capital improvement budget provides over $58 million to upgrade and maintain our infrastructures in areas such as road construction, new traffic signals, bridges, buildings and grounds, recreational facilities, educational facilities, information technology, public safety, business development, and human service. The formulation and the structure of our capital budget is closely tied to the county debt strategy. In order to maintain the county's AAA bond rating and to reduce overall costs, in 2014, the Board of Chosen Freeholders formulated a strategy to reduce long-term total net debt and annual debt service while still providing an average of $50 million each year for capital improvements. I am pleased to report that that strategy, now in its fourth year, work, is working and working well. The proof is evident by looking at the relation of net debt, annual debt service, and the reaffirmation year after year of AAA bond rating. When we look at the net debt curve, by looking at this graph, it's clear that implementing sound debt strategies has completely reversed the direction of our dependency on debt. Once again, for the fourth year, we have reduced our total net debt this year by $36 million, and more impressive since 2013, a reduction of $226 million, or 32%. The same reversal trend is evident in annual debt service payments. In 2015, our annual interest and principal payments comprise 22% of our operating expense budget. That's in effect a quarter of our operating budget. By targeting the debt service portion of the budget, we felt that this is where we could have the largest impact for cost savings. As is in our total net debt, in 2018, we reduced annual debt service for a fourth year in a row, a reduction of payments by nearly $3 million from 2017, and a total reduction of over $13 million since 2015. As a result of this hard work, in 2018, annual interest and principal payment represent a much lower 70% of our total operating budget, a reduction of 5% since 2015. These reductions in debt service payments have enabled the Freeholder Board to fund new services for the arts, technology, and healthcare. The Finance Department is projecting this decrease in trends in debt to continue for the next five years and must slightly further than that. That's my presentation. Are there any questions, Freeholders?
If you have any questions. Joe? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Freeholder. If I may, I'd like to thank the Board, specifically you, and Fielder Capel for assisting us in the budget, also the county administrator, all the departments that are active in the budget process, as well as the Office Director, and certainly my staff, the Finance Department, in particular, Gate Cookie, our Assistant Controller, he worked hard on the annual financial statement, and some of us are budget directors, who've been spending every night and weekend here for the last couple of weeks, so I'd like to commend them. Thank you, Freeholders.
This time the clerk will read, you can see adopted Resolution 18-186 by Tyler Owen.
Authorized increase in 2018 tax levy cap limits and establish, establishment of a cap bank, NJSA 40A, colon, 4 dash, 45, colon, 14, to be increased by 1% in the amount of $2,613,538.4. Authorized public hearing to be held on March 5th, 2018, at 7 o'clock PM in the Freeholders' meeting room. March 15th, 2018.
Clerk will read the summary of the proposed budget.
Total general appropriations for 2018 is $469,920,000. For 2017, $458,489,000. Less anticipated revenues for 2018, $80,447,100. For 2017, $78,589,941. Amounts to be raised by taxation, county purpose tax for 2018, $389,875,249. For 2017, $380,439,590.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some.
Motion by Fielder Capel, second by Fielder Valente. Roll call.
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Penny?
Fielder Capel?
Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Valenti?
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios?
Yes. Okay. Tonight we're going to introduce the 2018 Middlesex County Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. I want to commend this Freeholder Board, Special Finance Chair, Freeholder Leslie Capel, our Administrator John Palamina, and our CFO Joe Peretti, and all our entire county workforce for their dedication to serving our residents and helping us to maintain or decrease our spending and increase our revenue to help us provide quality services at the lowest possible cost. I thank the Freeholders for working with our department heads to produce the budget proposal we've put forward tonight. Middlesex County has attained for 17th year the coveted AAA bond rating. This excellent rating enables us to spend less taxpayer money when completing critical infrastructure projects. This is crucial as we are budgeting $58 million to our capital improvement master plan to complete vital road, bridge, facility, educational, parks, and other infrastructure projects. This is not, this not only ensures the safety of our residents, but improves their well-being and our efficiency and effectiveness. The rating agency has recognized the fiscal austerity and financial acumen we exercise. They have remarked favorably on our ability to reduce our overall debt by $226 million since 2013. Also, we have eliminated the use of one-time revenue sources in favor of building sustainable reoccurring revenue sources such as our numerous shared service agreements. These agreements comprise 24% of the special items of revenue, or over $10.1 million. We will continue our work in reducing our costs and generating new revenue to lessen the taxpayer, to lessen the tax burden on our residents. Over the next few weeks, as we work toward the adoption of the budget, we will continue to assess each program and expense and seek out ways to increase revenue to ensure we are meeting the needs of all our residents. With that, I would like to ask Fielder Capel to introduce the budget proposal.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I introduce to you the 2018 Middlesex County Budget Proposal. This $469,999 million proposal follows Middlesex County's tradition of maintaining or lowering the cost of operations without impacting the quality of the services offered. What is noticeable, notable about this year's budget proposal is that the county's overall debt is $32 million, less than it was in 2017, with a total savings of $226 million in overall debt since 2013. The proposal also includes more than $10 million in sustainable reoccurring revenue sources, and once again does not include any one-time revenue devices to increase spending or begin gaps. For a seventh straight year, the budget proposal does not rely on surplus funds to fill budget gaps. No other county in the state of New Jersey can say that. These are a few of the reasons we maintain our excellent bond rating and can provide the quality services our residents need at the lowest possible costs. A modest $2,487,000 increase in salaries and wages is due to 2% negotiated wage increases. Increases in mandated expenses, expenditures that are outside of county's control, total $5,758,974. We have maintained or decreased spending in every line item we control. And despite these belt tightening measures, we will continue to invest in our critical infrastructure because as public servants, we must ensure the safety of our residents and improve their quality of life by offering safer roads and bridges and top-notch educational and recreational facilities. I would like to thank my fellow Freeholders, the county administrator, the Finance Department under the direction of Joe Peretti, and all of our employees for their hard work in establishing this proposal. Now, I would like to recognize our CFO and Treasurer, Joe Peretti, to walk us through the budget.
Thank you, Freeholder. Good evening, Freeholders, members of the public. Tonight I'm here to introduce the budget for 2018. The 2018 budget is comprised of $469,920,000, with a tax levy of $389,875,249. I'll give some highlights on the overall budget in a little detail on the different sections. This budget represents less than 1% increase in the average tax rate, and it's also under the 2% stay mandated cap. With this budget, we continue a 10-year-old trend of budget minimal increases. As the Freeholder mentioned, this will be the straight, seventh straight year of not using surplus fund balances to balance our budget. We're the only county in the state that has a practice of not relying on surplus to balance its budget. We don't consider doing so to be a good financial practice. Our salaries are going up by $2.4, approximately $2.5 million, which is in line with 2% negotiated annual wage increases. On the operating side, we will continue to invest in technology, infrastructure, and equipment upgrade. These investments are critical in order to provide a proper level of services to our residents. However, 70% or $5.8 million of the $8.5 million increase in operating expenses comprise of non-discretionary items, which are not controlled by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, and they are health insurance increased by 2.4 million, or 4% from last year, well below the private sector in the state of New Jersey, plan increases. We can't attribute some of this low rate of increase to the county wellness program, which is now in its 5th year. Utilities increased by $1.6 million, primarily due to projected increases in the energy rates and gasoline prices, and also due to the recent coal spills. Pension costs up by $1.2 million. These rates are set by the state New Jersey pension system. And the last item there is a loan correction center that's related to new medical and food contracts and investment and new jail management system. Now, on the right side are the discretionary increases which we have in our budget. The increase in highway and bridges, the first item there, and central vehicle, the third item there, is the county's continued effort to decrease dependency on one-time revenue fixes. Approximately five years ago, the county began to slowly reduce revenue subsidies in certain eligible budgets. We have successfully eliminated all the subsidies, and these increases of $1.588 million represents a very less of the effective budgets. An increase of $300,000 is required to fund two newly created offices. The Office of Public and Government Affairs was created in order, in order to actively, actively work closely with the state and federal agencies and legislatures in order to seek out policies and funding sources that could benefit the people and business of Middlesex County. In 2018, the Board also created the Office of Professional Development in order to better provide continuing career development opportunities to our employees. This investment will result in a more efficient and productive workforce. The other two items on the list are requiring in order to properly fund activities for two of our times agencies, the Board of Social Services and the Votex School System. All other increases not listed on the sheet, such as statutory, contractual, and cost of living increases, are being offset by budget reduction within our budget. This demonstrates our commitment in keeping costs to a very minimum. The commitment can be also found by looking at a five-year trend that averages just above 1% annual increases in discretionary operating expenses. Now let's move to revenues. Operating revenues increased by $3 million. Top in the list is our Sheriff's Office, followed by the County Clerk, revenues which have increased by $844,000. This is due to an increase in realty transactions, which is a specific indicator of the sound local economy. The next regular increase is interest and investments. This interest increase of over half a million dollars is a result of the county's increased cash position in 2018. On the special item of revenue, as the Freeholders have mentioned, are slightly down by 1.5 million. Here is where we define reoccurring sustainable shared service agreements, such as Health Agent Municipally, Regional Medical Examiner, and Youth Service Agreements with other counties. In 2018, all the shared services bring in over $10 million in revenue. The next item of our budget is our capital budget. Freeholders, in your packet, you'll see you have the summary of the post-capital budget for 2018. This year, capital improvement budget provides over $58 million to upgrade and maintain our infrastructures in areas such as road construction, new traffic signals, bridges, buildings and grounds, recreational facilities, educational facilities, information technology, public safety, business development, and human service. The formulation and the structure of our capital budget is closely tied to the county debt strategy. In order to maintain the county's AAA bond rating and to reduce overall costs, in 2014, the Board of Chosen Freeholders formulated a strategy to reduce long-term total net debt and annual debt service while still providing an average of $50 million each year for capital improvements. I am pleased to report that that strategy, now in its fourth year, work, is working and working well. The proof is evident by looking at the relation of net debt, annual debt service, and the reaffirmation year after year of AAA bond rating.
We will continue to invest in technology, infrastructure, and equipment upgrade. These investments are critical in order to provide the proper level of services to our residents. However, seventy percent or five point eight million dollars of the eight point five million dollar increase in operating expenses comprise of non-discretionary items which have not controlled by the Board of Children's Freeholders. And they are: health insurance, increased by two point four million, or four percent from last year, well below the private sector in the state of New Jersey, plan increases. We can't attribute some of this low rate of increase to the County Wellness Program, which is now in its fifth year. Utilities increased by one point six million dollars, primarily due to projected increases in the energy rates and gasoline prices, and also due to the recent bus bills. Pension costs up by one point two million. These rates are set by the state New Jersey pension system. And the last item there is the Low Correction Center. That's related to new medical and food contracts and investment and new jail management system. Now, on the right side are the discretionary increases which we have in our budget. The increase in highway and bridges, the first item there, and central vehicle, the third item there, is the county's continued effort to decrease dependency on one-time revenue fixes. Approximately five years ago, the county began to slowly reduce revenue subsidies in certain eligible budgets. We have successfully eliminated all the subsidies, and these increases of one point five eighty million dollars represents a very less of the effective budgets. An increase of three hundred dozen dollars is required to fund two newly created offices. The Office of Public and Government Affairs was created in order to actively work closely with the state and federal agencies and legislatures in order to seek out policies and funding sources that could benefit the people and business of Middlesex County. In 2018, the board also created the Office of Professional Development in order to better provide continuing career development opportunities to our employees. This investment will result in a more efficient and productive workforce. The other two items on the list are requiring in order to properly fund activities for two of our times agencies, the Board of Social Services and the Votec School System. All other increases not listed on the sheet, such as statutory, contractual, and cost of living increases, are being offset by budget reduction within our budget. This demonstrates our commitment in keeping costs to a very minimum. The commitment can be also found by looking at five-year trend that averages just above one percent annual increases in discretionary operating expenses. Now let's move to revenues. Operating revenues increased by three million dollars. Top of the list is our sheriff's office, followed by the county clerk, revenues which have increased by eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This is due to an increase in realty transactions, which is a specific indicator of the sound local economy. The next regular increase is interest and investments. This interest increase over half a million dollars is a result of the county's increased cash position in 2018. On the special item of revenue, as the freeholders have mentioned, are slightly down by one point five million. Here is where we define recurring sustainable share service agreements, such as health agency valley, regional medical examiner, and youth service agreements with other counties. In 2018, all the share services bring in over ten million dollars in revenue. The next item of our budget is our capital budget. Freeholders, in your packet, you'll see you have the summary of the post-capital budget for 2018. This year, capital improvement budget provides over fifty-eight million dollars to upgrade and maintain our infrastructures in areas such as road construction, new traffic signals, bridges, buildings and grounds, recreational facilities, educational facilities, information technology, public safety, business development, and human service. The formulation and the structure of our capital budget is closely tied to the county debt strategy. In order to maintain the county AAA bond rating and to reduce overall costs, in 2014, the Board of Children's Freeholders formulated a strategy to reduce long-term total net debt and annual debt service while still providing an average of fifty million dollars each year for capital improvements. I am pleased to report that that strategy, now in its fourth year, is working and working well. The proof is evident by looking at the reduction in net debt, annual debt service, and the reaffirmation year after year of AAA bond rating. When we look at the net debt curve, by looking at this graph, it's clear that implementing sound debt strategies has completely reversed the direction of our dependency on debt. Once again, for the fourth year, we have reduced our total net debt this year by thirty-six million dollars, and more impressive since 2013, a reduction of two hundred and twenty-six million dollars, or thirty-two percent. The same reversal trend is evident in annual debt service payments. In 2015, our annual interest and principal payments comprised twenty-two percent of our operating expense budget. That's in effect a quarter of our operating budget. By targeting the debt service portion of the budget, we felt that this is where we could have the largest impact for cost savings. As is in our total net debt, in 2018, we reduced annual debt service for a fourth year in a row, a reduction of payments by nearly three million dollars from 2017, and a total reduction over thirteen million since 2015. As a result of his hard work, in 2018, annual interest and principal payment represent a much lower seventeen percent of our total operating budget, a reduction of five percent since 2015. This reductions in debt service payments have enabled the Freeholder Board to fund new services for the arts, technology, and healthcare. The Finance Department is projecting this decreasing trends in debt to continue for the next five years and must slightly further than that. That's my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. If I may, I'd like to thank the board, specifically you, and the Freeholder couple for assisting us with budget, also the county administrator, all the departments that are active in the budget process, as well as the office director, and certainly my staff, the Finance Department, in particular, Gate Cookie, our assistant controller, he worked hard on the annual financial statement, and some of us, our budget director, who's been spending every night and weekend here for the last couple of weeks, so I'd like to commend them. Thank you, Phil.
This time, the clerk will read, please see adopted resolution eighteen dash one eighty-six by Ty Owen.
Authorized increase in 2018 tax levy cap limits and establishment of a cafe NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash forty-five, colon, fourteen, to be increased by one percent in the amount of two billion, six hundred, thirteen million, five hundred, start, two million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and four cents. Authorized public hearing to be held on March fifth, 2018, at seven o'clock PM in the Freeholders' meeting room.
Clark will read the summary of the proposed budget.
Total general appropriations for 2018 is four hundred sixty-nine million, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For 2017, four hundred fifty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Less anticipated revenues for 2018, eighty million, four, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. For 2017, seventy-eight million, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. Amounts be raised by taxation, county purpose tax for 2018, three hundred and eighty-nine million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. For 2017, three hundred and eighty million, four hundred and thirty thousand, fifty-nine dollars.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some.
Motion by the holder, Capo, seconded by Freeholder Valente. Roll call.
Freeholder Arwin?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Capo?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. That's a motion to introduce the budget. Correspondents?
And the budget office. Annual budget of the County of Middlesex for fiscal year 2018, we have resolved that the following segments of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the County of Middlesex, the county budget for year 2018. We have further resolved that a summary of said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of March second, 2018. Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Middlesex does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year 2018. Notice is hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by the Board Chosen Freeholders of the County of Middlesex on February fifteenth, 2018. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held in the County Administration Building, New Brunswick, New Jersey, on March fifteenth, 2018, at seven o'clock PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2018 may be presented by taxpayers or other.
Correspondents?
Each Freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondents received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondent will be kept on file in the Office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept their correspondence?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tamara. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Board of Chosen Freeholders' regular meeting, February first, 2018, at seven o'clock PM.
Is there a motion to accept? Approved. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tamara. Roll call.
Freeholder Arwin?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Capo?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. The force of Freeholders, Freeholder Ken Arwin.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Business Development and Education Department, the Office of Arts and History, come meet Thomas Jefferson at our President's Day Celebration on Sunday, February twenty-fifth, at one and three PM at East Jersey Old Town Village on River Oaken to Scadway. This is a pre-event. Text culture to five six five one two for more details. From the Votec, the Middlesex County Academy for Science, Mathematics, and Engineering Technologies in Edison ranks first among New Jersey public schools in average SAT scores for the class of 2017. The Academy for Allied Health and Biomedical Sciences in Woodbridge was fifth in SAT averages released by the State Department of Education. The Edison Academy also was singled out as one of the nation's best high schools, offering career majors in civil and mechanical engineering, electronic and computer engineering by U.S. News and World Report, receiving gold medal honors in the magazine's annual rankings since 2013. The Woodbridge Academy trained students for further education in medicine and related fields also achieved the gold medal ranking in 2014, 2016, and 2017. We are delighted to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of these dedicated students and the staff. From the Office of Workforce Development, Skill Up Middlesex is now live. The county has offered over forty-five hundred courses through a free online learning platform. It is a way to enhance skills and obtain industry-recognized credentials by taking many courses. It covers courses in many industries including transportation, project management, accounting, human resources, IT sales, and marketing, and so much more. The program will identify the skills required for in-demand careers and provide a training plan. There are course recommendations based on essential industry skills and the ability to find jobs. Skill Up Middlesex will be featured on our February Spotlight Show. And I would be remiss as Chair of the Education Department to not mention the shootings yesterday in Florida at the Parkland High School. This is weight-heavy on my heart, and I refuse to believe we live in a world where it becomes mundane and routine that children and innocent adults are slaughtered on a daily basis. I saw that there's a stat that in 2018, fifty-five percent of the days that schools had been in session, there's been a school shooting. To throw up our hands and say there's nothing we can do is just unacceptable. And I hope from the municipalities to Washington DC that we have legislators and policymakers that dedicate themselves to protecting everyone from this scourge that seems to be germinating to our society. And I'm not sure why there's so much inaction when you see what happened on the news yesterday and looking at some of those videos and seeing some of the messages from children as they were caught in the crossfire. So I'm going to curb any more, anything that would be political, but I do say that there's so much more that we can do as a society, and we must dedicate ourselves to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Arwin. Freeholder Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. Just to follow up, Freeholder Arwin just said, I really can't say anything better than the way you just put it. The only thing I would add is that there, and I believe you were referring to this, there should be no discussion. That's off the table. There should be no discussion. That's a nonstarter. Everything should be open. Everything should be looked at, and we should be looking at ways that we can reduce and make our schools safe, make our society safer than we are today. So just moving on to the rest of my comments here, I just want to take note of Resolution two oh three, just to let you know that that's a seventy-five percent matching grant for the DEP that we've already been approved for, and that's for the waterfront park in North Amboy. And Resolution one eighty-seven, that's improvements for all three facilities, and those improvements break down for items for irrigation systems, drainage, work by the mosquito commission. So those are already agenda for tonight. Last meeting we had, I spoke about the NJTPA. I spoke about how they had awarded a grant to Metuchen. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about, and I realized afterwards, as I scribbled my notes on here, sometimes I lose track of where I'm at, just the NJTPA was started, there used to be a Delaware Valley, they're covered Philadelphia in the southern end of the state, and there was the New York City Transportation Plan and Authority. And New Jersey, like always, got overlooked. And so what happened was, years back, Freeholder Dave Cregba and Freeholder Pink Palmer from Somerset County got together, and they said that there's a better way for us to get representation. And so they created the NJTPA. They were the cornerstone in getting that program started, so this way New Jersey has a voice when it comes to federal funds and how we move, how we move people and freight better in the state. And so I just want to acknowledge their work and what they did to get that going. They also created a organization that, as I learned as I've been there, when you walk to the door and you come inside, you leave your political party outside. We work for, or I should say, the employees of the NJTPA, people like George and Anthony and others, work for the betterment of our state, the betterment of how we, like I said, move people and move freight and just get around the state. So I just wanted to acknowledge that fact, that Freeholder Dave Cregba had a big hand in getting that off the ground. And my last item I just want to talk about is the President's Infrastructure Plan. In the current form, this is not, not good. As the, the way it works now is eighty percent is usually provided by the federal government for big projects, and twenty percent is made up through the county, the state, and the local municipalities. They're going to reverse. They're going to make it twenty percent by the federal government, eighty percent through those other groups, which is going to put a heavy burden on those in the state of New Jersey. They're going to be taking money from other projects to fund these, this plan that they have, projects that were already being looked at, being designed, money's going to come away from there. One of the big items that we have on the table is the Gateway Tunnel. How are we going to add more tunnels to get people and freight in and out of New York City, or at least underneath the Hudson River? This is a project where the states, New York City, the Port Authority, the state of New Jersey have stepped up to say they're going to pay fifty percent, and the federal government was supposed to throw in fifty percent. That's no longer being discussed. That, because they're considering it a newstart project, is not part of the process of funding as we stand now. And this is not the, the economic toll that it could have on the state of New Jersey is unbelievable, but especially here in Middlesex County, where you have people that, because of the fact that we have the rail lines that go through Middlesex County, whether it be the coastline or the northeast corridor, people that use it for work, to get in and out, use it to move freight around. It's something that we really need to keep an eye on and have a discussion with our federal leaders in regards to making sure that this plan does not, does not get put into place. I guess that I can close with what I had said about the NJTPA. This plan that's been put forward by the President has been panned by both Republicans and Democrats because of the way it is. So hopefully, parties are going to be left at the door, people are going to come together, and we're going to work out some type of plan, some type of formula, that's going to improve our infrastructure, which is greatly needed for people to work and improve the world that we live in. And so that's all I have, Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Freeholder Leslie Cottle?
I have no further reports this evening.
Freeholder Shantina?
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Recently, the EMS Bureau of the Office of Emergency Management and Preparedness held its annual EMS officers' meeting at the Fire Academy. This meeting was attended by municipal first aid squad captains, EMS agency chiefs, and the hospital providers from throughout Middlesex County. The topics discussed included interoperable radio communications, EMS annexes to municipal emergency operation plans, mass casualty resource request protocols, and changes in the New Jersey Department of Health regulations for EMS. As in years past, the Middlesex County Office of Emergency Management continues to provide training programs and specialized response equipment to agencies throughout the county. For 2018, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funding has been dedicated to provide training and equipment to prepare EMS agencies and first squads, first aid squads, to prepare for and respond to active shooter incidents, as well as other terrorism-related mass casualty incidents. Which leads me directly to what I have wanted to say about how this relates to our county and then what happened yesterday. There have been a lot of condolences and offers of prayers to the victims in the community of Parkland, and I think most of them are very heartfelt and sincere from our fellow Americans. I would just say personally, I find some of them ring hollow when they come from people who have an opportunity to make changes to protect our children and our communities since Newtown. And I am sincerely hoping that the people who do feel this deep sense of hurt and betrayal and the fact that they don't, they aren't safe in their communities can all band together to make our representatives do what's necessary. Because I especially find that these prayers and condolences ring hollow when they come from people who want to turn around and blame our children for not doing enough to prevent their own deaths and trauma yesterday. So that's all I'll say about it, but I am certainly going to try to do my part. The Office of Health Services wants to remind everyone that it is not too late to get a flu shot, if you have not already done so. This flu season has been very active, and it is unknown when the flu season will end, but it has been known to go into April and May in previous years. The Office of Health Services continues to provide flu shots at our public health clinics every Wednesday at five nine six Jersey Avenue, New Brunswick from two and three, two to three PM, and twenty-nine Oakwood Avenue Edison from nine thirty to eleven thirty. Please check the Middlesex County website for additional flu immunization clinics that may be conducted in addition to regular scheduled ones. In the search bar on the website, type flu, and you will be directed to information on flu and upcoming clinics, and I really urge everyone to do that. We lost another child in this state just this past week. It's very important, and it's still very relevant for the next, at least, month. Thank you, Freeholder Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Deputy Director Charlie Tamara?
Thank you, Director. Back in the nineties, this Freeholder Board, you know, supported a resolution to go on for ballot question for open space taxes to recharge to our residents in Middlesex County. Since then, and they've cast two of them, since then, we have purchased all over ten thousand acres of open, of land to preserve as open space and also farmland preservation. Earlier tonight, we presented, we had a presentation about a potential acquisition of fifteen acres of open space in East Brunswick, known as the Blumnick Parcel. This potential acquisition will add fourteen hundred, will add to the fourteen hundred and thirty-six acres of the Jamesburg Park Conservation Area already preserved as open space. Jamesburg Park Conservation Area stretches across municipalities of East Brunswick, Spotswood, Telkyn, and Monroe, and protects some of the last remaining acres of Pine Barrens habitat in Middlesex County. Named after the failed housing project from the nineteen twenties known as, known as Jamesburg Park, this property supports the higher end lead plants and animals and offers, offers water quality protection from the Naddle and Brook, and the soil, and soils water recharge for the region. We are excited to add this parcel to our open space inventory and look forward to its successful closing in the coming months. I want to thank you, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Blanquita Valente?
Thank you, Freeholder Rios. From the Department of Community Services, I have several announcements to share tonight. First, the U.S. Department of State has announced that a passport execution fee will increase from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars on April the second. This fee is mandated by the Department of State and applies to passport applications that are submitted to unauthorized agents such as the county clerk's office, a U.S. Post Office, or other government entity. Residents can download a passport application and learn more about the process by searching for passports on the Middlesex County's website. Also, on February the twenty-eighth, at ten AM, the New Jersey Department of Human Services will host a Puerto Rico evacuation session at the Alexander J. H. and Kelsey Community Center in North Amboy. This session will provide attendees with valuable information, both federal and state assistance. And finally, taxi tunes upon us, and I want to remind residents that free assistance in completing your tax returns is available at nearly thirty public sites across the county. To find out more about the locations, schedule an appointment, please call the Middlesex County Office of Asian and disabled services at seven three two, seven four five, three two, nine five. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided? This time, I open up to being to the public on any resolutions listed on me. Anyone from the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Al Fertano from Law Project. I'm concerned with this year's Resolution eighteen one eighty-seven R. You have no justification to pass this. This should be voided immediately. Did everybody on E four, the Freeholder elected officials, read the contract agreement between the improvement authority and the county building? If you have, you wouldn't be giving them this money. They don't know how to run a golf course. They should be paying our people money, not you giving them money. And the past year, you gave extremely dollars for improvements to the golf course, and then the contractor says they're responsible for all the improvements at the golf course with the revenue they made. They violated the contract, and you violated the contract. You should be under investigation. You're a disgrace to the people of Middlesex County. Our tax payers, payers keep going rising and rising because you give away the money for no reason. You have no justification. And I'll guarantee it, each one of you Freeholders never read that agreement.
Mr. Fertano, please refer to the Resolution period.
Excuse me?
Just about, just speak.
Well, that is part of the resolution. That contract is part of our resolution. No telling any different. I wish the prosecutor, head of prosecutor here was here. I put you under investigation, went away. This is almost what you would say criminal. I have reason to believe you just trolling stuff out to the public, giving them the authority. They don't know how to run a golf course. That's why they don't make any money. They should be paying us, not you paying them to run the golf course. That's crazy. Also, do you still agree that the golf course at Tamarack is a park?
Please relate to the Resolution.
That relates to the Resolution. Do you remember that? Golf courses at that park? You can't answer my questions. If you pass this resolution, every one of these elected officials are going to be liable. If you pass this resolution, every one of these elected officials are going to be liable. Now think about it. If you didn't read the contract between them, you have no reason to approve this resolution at all. I don't want to get into all the areas, but they made a big mistake giving those golf courses to the Improvement Authority. I'll come back with other stuff for a bonus thing, but you should not pass this resolution. You got away with the other one for some reason because nobody got up there and talked about it. And we're talking $3 million now, any here. It's absolutely wrong. And you should be ashamed of yourself for approving that other one. I don't think you guys do your homework. It's like a slam dunk with these resolutions. Boom, 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 pass them all. Give all the money away. What's the public here? They don't know what's going on. That's where our tax is going up, up, and up and away. And that's where you get the money from the taxpayers. And they get wet tickets. You're ashamed of yourself. You shouldn't have been one if you passed this resolution. Thank you. I'll be back.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Ford, Charles Bradaville from New Brunswick. The head of the New Brunswick Today, community newspaper. First resolution, first question. Can you tell me, Freeholder Director, who recommended Ms. Champlin for this position?
I did.
You did, and so you know her. You think she's a good ethical person?
I think she's a very ethical person, yes.
Terrific. Well, I'm happy that the board will have a full complement of members. Can you tell me, does the Ethics Board have a meeting scheduled soon?
I don't know if they have a meeting scheduled.
Okay, because I know presently, they only schedule three a year, and they sometimes cancel one of them. So they should, they should meet more regularly and they should meet at a time that's convenient for the public. They currently meet at 3 p.m. in this room, so it's really usually just me that shows up. And I think if they're, if they want to be above board and out there in the public, they should have the meeting at 6 or 7 p.m. the easier for people to make it. Next appointment, next question. Who recommended Ms. Rotterburn from the Utilities Authority?
I did.
Yes, and you are?
Yes, I do.
Can you tell me what makes her a good choice for the Utilities Authority?
She has submitted a resume, and she's been, she has a college degree, and I think she's an outstanding citizen, and I think she'll be a great addition to the board.
Thank you. I won't use the personal language Mr. Portano used regarding 187, but I do think he has a point that the county is subsidizing the golf courses. And at some point, that should, should end. I know we discussed it a little bit in the past. But can you tell me why is it necessary and what the county is going to do to try to stop, you know, having to make a $1.6 million support payment to these golf courses?
Johnny, first of all, we think that it's an important investment into our golf courses because a lot of our residents use the golf courses and to stay competitive with outside golf courses other than Middlesex County, the three of ours, I think we need to make investments in them so we attract golfers to come here and play golf. Plus the golfers and keep the golfers that we have. Because I've heard comments from many golfers through the years that these golf courses need upgrades and to be maintained. So we feel it's a good investment for golf courses.
Mr. Pulamina, if you were there?
Yeah, when you look at overall recreational programs we provide to our residents, there's investments we make in all of our infrastructure, our parks, our golf courses, because there are facilities and venues that our residents take full advantage of at a much discounted price than other places. As with any golf courses, investments you need to continue to make in irrigation and drainage in the facilities that people use, bathrooms, all part of the infrastructure that is responsibility for Middlesex County.
Okay, it is a lot of money, $1.6 million. Can you just tell me, do you anticipate having to do the same thing next year for, to support the golf courses?
Like any other infrastructure improvements we make to roads, bridges, recreation facilities, reassess and make sure from a lifecycle management of those facilities that investments continue, need to continue to be made to make sure that the safety and well-being of our residents are taken care of. As you well know, to all of our facilities, we are in tear, and use for life has a limit. We have a very stable program to ensure that we are investing in that management of those facilities at the best possible and most efficiently possible.
Okay, so it could be more, could be less next year?
Our hope is that it's consistent with what we pay each year. And more importantly, it really depends upon what breaks, what needs to be maintained, and those unknowns vary year to year.
Okay. Do you want to ask about 203 and 240? Can I just get an update on these projects? The waterfront park in Port Amboy, the other is a project that I thought was already under construction here in New Brunswick. The 101 Seaver Way, can I get an update on the timeframe on when these projects might be completed and ongoing?
Rick?
Director, 203, the Port Amboy Waterfront Park is currently still in design. All permits have been submitted to both VP and our department of engineering, so we're waiting on their response.
And the 101 Seaver Way, is this, why is this additional funding necessary?
Which one is that?
Uh, 240.
It's not additional funding. When we originally did this, it was a commitment of funding. It's actually recent funding. And they have the ribbon cutting on March 7.
Great. Do you know what time?
11 a.m.
11 a.m. I'll see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Let's close the portion.
Second.
Motion to vote by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, on favor. I oppose. Okay. Do any Freeholders have to vote separately on any resolutions? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be a matter to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution numbers 18-175 through Resolution 18-260, excluding Resolution 18-186, which was previously voted upon.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Deputy Director Tamara. Both call?
Freeholder Armuth?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Freeholder Bravo?
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. This time, I open up the meeting to the public.
Al Portano from Law Project. I recently believed you were a collusion with the Improvement Authority, and it's almost 100% these are. Now, I called up last week to find out who purchased the metal golf course and did our taxpayers use their money to purchase it?
Mr. Pulamina called you last week?
I spoke with him regarding the maintenance agreement by the NCIA of the golf courses. I'm not sure who he talked to.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Excuse me. The questions you were asking regarding the maintenance of the golf course by the NCIA, you did not ask any questions to me unless it's someone else regarding.
That's not the question I asked.
The question you asked was...
If I remember correctly, in 1999, the taxpayer, the county government paid $4 million for that golf course. How did the Improvement Authority get that golf course? They claimed they owned it from 1999 to 2014. And I just have to buy it back from the Improvement Authority for how much? How much did you pay for that golf course in 2014?
The county acquired the, that golf course from the Improvement Authority in 2014 for $7 million.
For how much?
$7 million.
$7 million?
Yep.
Well, they made money. That's nice. Give them more money. What the heck? Throw the whole county to them. It's absolutely crazy. Now, I keep questioning about the Tamarack park where the golf courses are. You're going to admit that it's a park or not? Park? Do you know how? Get up. Is it an official park? That's all I want to know.
Mr. Portano, you and I spoke at length with this, and we also agreed that we may be talking about a manner of semantics here. If you go to the county parks website, golf courses is on there. They might go to work.
It's not on here, though, is it? The brochure with all the parks in the county. So you want to see this?
You want him to answer the question, sir?
A golf course. You disagree. All right, so maybe we agree to disagree on the semantics. A golf course is a form of parkland. On our website, you give it its own section so that folks know to go to that section because it's a specific recreational opportunity versus the broad opportunities that we offer. So yes, our golf courses are considered parkland. They are contained on our recreational open space inventory. That's filed with Green Acres, right? And Green Acres also verified that with you. So I don't, we can keep going back and forth on this semantics.
It's not listed anywhere as a park.
So if I redo the brochure and list on there, will that end the conversation?
It should be on here.
Will that end the conversation?
Yeah, I'm bringing it up here.
Okay, so you want me to list it on my brochure, and we won't have to hear about this anymore?
Why isn't it listed? It's been here for 50 years, 60 years.
Do you want me to list it or not?
You can list it. Why wasn't it listed in the future before you?
Oversight to my part. People are responsible.
You take the co-reflection. What else are you going to say? I know a good guy. I know a good guy.
You have some issues, huh?
Don't, I told you, you slam dunk these resolutions. You don't care about how much money you give away. It's all waste money. $3 million to give to the friggin' Improvement Authority for the golf course improvements when they see paying us, the taxpayers, with the revenue that they make from that golf course? And the reason they don't make the revenue is they don't know how to run a golf course to make money. They are terrible. That's why you're supposed to have a management firm over there, and you don't. And it's been going on for years. And you never negotiated the contract with them years after years because you lost the contract, remember? I had to give you a copy of it. Now don't you feel bad and lost it?
Nobody ever said we lost the contract.
Then why didn't you have it? When I asked you before?
I don't carry contracts up here with me, Mr. Portano.
You would have known about the contract because it's got to be reviewed so many times in a year by the Freeholders. Don't give me that in this room. You guys are terrible. Let me tell you, that's not how you got elected. Thank you.
Okay, next. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Celia Larenkas. I'm from Somerset, New Jersey, and I work at Food and Water Watch in New Brunswick and also attend the last year's school records. So I am here to talk about a couple of bills that were recently introduced in the state legislature. There's the Off Fossil Fuels Act, and Assemblyman Tim Eustace introduced this act in the assembly, and Senator Patrick Diamond introduced it in the state senate. And these bills would get New Jersey to 100% renewable energy by 2035, which, which sounds ambitious, but it is the, 2035 is the number that comes from what we would need to reduce our emissions by to meet the goals stated in the Paris Climate Agreement. So I think New Jersey could really be a leader on this issue. And I think that this board of chosen Freeholders could be leaders on this issue. It would be great if Middlesex would become the first county in New Jersey to pass a resolution in support of this off act. And I got a chance to speak with a few of you before the meeting. Thank you so much for your time. So I gave most of you a packet, which included the text of a resolution that was passed by the Atlantic City Council in support of the off act, as well as a sample text of a resolution that Middlesex County could pass. And there's also a list of officials, elected officials in New Jersey that have taken the pledge that Food and Water Watch, Food and Water Watch is a sister organization, Food and Water Action, has extended to elected officials to support any measures to move the country to 100% renewable energy. And I also wanted to invite all of you on the board, and everyone in this room as well, to an event that we are holding at Rovers New Brunswick on Cook Campus, February 28, 7 p.m., called Clean Energy for a Better Future, where we will discuss this very issue, the urgency of moving New Jersey to 100% renewable energy. We will have six elected officials, at least six elected officials from the state in attendance. We hope that some of you will join us as well. And we will discuss the policy solutions that will move this forward. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr.? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Charles Bradaville of New Brunswick. New Brunswick today. Want to start by wishing everybody very happy Black History Month. I think it's, you know, a very important thing that we study history. It's part of the reason I do the work that I do. And I hope that the county will continue to honor the amazing contributions that Black Americans have made to our county. Folks like Al Cooper, first Black Mayor of New Brunswick. And part of, you know, studying history is to study the good and the bad. And so that also means that when we look at some of the people that are sometimes honored, that were not so great, like Woodrow Wilson or Thomas Edison, that we need to tell the good and the bad. I have a lot of concerns, but first and foremost, I need to know, has the Ethics Board hired a special counsel to handle the complaints that I've filed with them?
I can't answer that because I honestly do not know.
Well, I'll bring a concern up here. So the firm Boris Golifoli-Vignolo Hyden and Saul is the regular counsel. Mr. Vignolo didn't file his required ethics forms in 2016, filed in 2017, but left off an important business interest that he has. And I saw a quote today in a publication, Tap Into New Brunswick. Daniel Munoz wrote about a lawsuit that was basically related to a planning board approval in New Brunswick on November 13. I believe it was a night that you guys had a meeting, and Mr. Kelso wasn't able to be here because he was busy representing a developer across the street.
That's not true. That's not true.
Which was the meeting that you missed that night?
I didn't miss any meeting when I was before the planning board that night. I haven't missed a Freeholder meeting here except when I took my grandchildren to the shore in August. So you're off, Charlie, and I'm surprised because you were there, as you always are, for me.
I was actually, left here early to make it to that one. You were not here, you were there. So Nick, Nicky filled in for you. And that was, that was the meeting, but okay.
That's not true.
Agree to disagree.
This is not true.
Okay, agree to disagree, but...
But when you make an accusation, Charlie, we know each other.
It's my time to speak, sir. It's my time to speak, so I would not like you to cut into my time here. And I can tell that you're upset because one of the ethics complaints is against you. And if you want to respond when I'm done, you can feel free to respond to it. But now is my time to speak. And I'd like to point out your quote today to Tap Into New Brunswick. Quote, "The suit has been filed by a competitor and is without merit." That's what began with your developer client. Well, the firm that filed that lawsuit is Boris Golifoli-Vignolo Hyden and Saul. So is this really a meritorious firm that's representing the Ethics Board? If Mr. Kelso believes they filed a suit that's without merit? This is another concern about this firm, and I don't believe that. I think it shines a light on the entanglements here that we have now, a dueling lawsuit between Mr. Kelso, who represents the county government sometimes, and sometimes represents developers, and Mr. Vignolo and his firm representing other interests that are suing you in private matters, and then also supposedly representing the Ethics Board, somebody who didn't even file his Ethics Board. So this is a serious concern, and, you know, obviously, you had the chance to respond at the end. But another concern is the cost of all this litigation that the county is involved in. So can you tell me, the lawsuit brought by Mr. Einko against the sheriff's office, $885,000 was the verdict, and a jury said the county has to pay him. I believe the county was appealing. Is there any update on that?
No, the appeal's just starting to go through a process.
Okay. I'll point out that in 2010, the county paid $1.59 million to two female employees of the sheriff's department who alleged sexual harassment. There was an 850k, or a 50k settlement later that year to settle another sexual harassment lawsuit, sorry, $850,000 for five female officers. $75,000 in 2011 for a black female clerk who alleged racial discrimination and verbal harassment. And of course, the lawsuit filed by Nellie Arcaro led to a $250,000 settlement. That was, she became the ninth woman in five years to get a settlement from the county. So that's just the cost of the settlements. Not even counting how much the county paid of our money to fight those cases as far as they made it. And so this is a serious concern. And I, if I'm not mistaken, did Freeholder Company, did Ms. Arcaro buy the house from you?
Not that I... Not that I, Ms. Arcaro, Ms. Nellie Arcaro... Not that I, not that I, Ms. Arcaro, Ms. Nellie Arcaro did purchase a house from me.
Was it before or after she got the $250k settlement?
I don't know when she got the $250k settlement.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you.
Mr. Kelso?
Anyone else in the public who would like to speak?
Second.
Motion opposed by Deputy Director Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente, on favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tamara, on favor. Opposed. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.